Hey, Vicky. What's up?
Public hearing. This hearing is taking place both in person in the Borough President's Conference Room and on our YouTube channel, @QueensBP. I am Vicky Garvey, the Director of Land Use, and I will be chairing this hearing on behalf of the Borough President. For those who wish to virtually testify and have it pre-registered to do so, please visit our website at queensbp, that's B as in boy, P as in Peter, dot NYC.gov. Please speak with staff to sign up for public speaking time if you have not already done so. Written testimony is welcome from those who are unable to testify in real time. All written testimony must be received by 5:00 PM today and may be submitted by email to planning2, that's planning the number two, at queensbp.nyc.gov, or by conventional mail sent to the Office of the Queens Borough President at 120-55 Queens Boulevard, Room 226, Kew Gardens, New York 11424. Lisa, can you please review how this public hearing will proceed?
Yes, good morning. The public hearing shall be conducted in the following manner. The applicant will give a description of the requested zoning action, the proposed project, and respond to any questions from the chair. The floor will then be open for public speakers. Please listen for your name to be called. Each speaker will have three minutes to ask questions and/or deliver testimony. When you are called, please identify yourself for the record, and if you are formally speaking, as a representative or member of a group, the calendar number, the application you are speaking about, and whether you are for or against that item, then you may begin your testimony. Please note that a signal will ring when your time is up. At the discretion of the chair, if there are a large number of speakers on any particular item, it may be put on second call. Speakers for and against that item may also be called to testify on an alternating basis. Please note that if you are testifying virtually, you must keep your camera on during your testimony and display your name accurately on Zoom. Thank you for your cooperation.
Thank you, Lisa. The chair reserves the right to ask speakers for clarifications or further information regarding applications or comments. So now, Lisa, let's call the first calendar item.
Sure. Calendar item number one, ULP number 250268ZMQ. The applicant, Broadwood Realty LLC, affected community board number two. Applicant, please begin.
I just want to note, items one and two are related.
Oh.
Sorry, sorry, go ahead.
My mistake.
Sure. Good morning, Ms. Garvey, Ms. Atkins, Richard Lobel of Sheldon Lobel, PC, for the applicant, Ankeet Mehta, who joins us on this call. With me as well is Juliette Stempler from my office, who will be running the screen presentation. We're here today to discuss the 6312 Broadway rezoning, most recently heard by Queens Community Board Two, and we're hoping that the Queens Borough President will join the community board in issuing a favorable determination on this matter. The next slide contains a summary of the application. The existing lot area included within the rezoning is currently zoned R5 with a C22 overlay. So, within certain frontage along Broadway here, and this is between 63rd and 64th Streets, the applicant is requesting a rezoning to an R7A district, and behind that, further along 63rd and 64th Streets, merely changing the commercial district designation from a C22 to a C24. We'll show that a little bit later on the maps. In addition to the rezoning, we would request a text amendment to allow for mandatory inclusionary housing, allowing for options one and two to allow flexibility within the rezoning area. The entirety of the actions here would facilitate a new nine-story-plus seller mixed-use development, commercial and residential, which would have roughly 9,000 or so square feet of commercial use on the ground floor and roughly 45,000 square feet of residential above. This would include roughly 67 dwelling units, which we have penciled out as including 22 permanently affordable units under MIH option two. Again, this was presented to Community Board Two, which voted overwhelmingly in favor of the application by a vote of 27 to 1. The next slide is the zoning map, which demonstrates several aspects of the proposed rezoning, which I think give the rezoning a lot of merit. You can see the existing R5 at the site with C22. The R5 district has been there since 1961, so well over 60 years. This is an outdated zoning district, particularly along Broadway, a wide thoroughfare in the area, which can easily handle the additional bulk of the site. We also note that further along Broadway to the east, roughly 10 blocks on the map, and further than that is zoned R7A already. So, this is a district which is well-known in the area as well as along Broadway and would produce residential units with affordability. The next slide is the tax map, which shows the bifurcated zoning area. Right now, the entirety of this area is R5 with a C22 overlay. This would merely change the R5 to an R7A, so we note the development site in red along the eastern portion of the block front, as well as five lots fronting Broadway to the west. Those would be rezoned with the R7A designation, and beyond that, the existing C22 would be zoned to a C24. This is a more common designation now and one that is selected by the Department for Up-to-Date Commercial Zoning, which would not have as arduous parking requirements. The next slide is the area map, which we think really tells the story well in terms of the rezoning and why this has such merit and why it has such support. We note the existence of the M and R trains along Broadway. The 65th Street stop merely one block away from the site. We further note that Broadway, again, a wide thoroughfare at 80 feet wide and a major thoroughfare in the area. Transportation options in the area abound. There are additional trains within four-tenths of a mile, as well as several bus lines, which can easily allow for residents and tenants and visitors to the site to visit the site. So, you know, given the fact that this is a wide thoroughfare, that there's excellent street frontage here, is a corner lot, transportation abounds, and also the existing R7A and context of the area, we feel that the designation here is entirely appropriate. The next several slides show pictures of the site. Again, the site here, the building has been in existence since the 1930s. We have kind of old one-story taxpayer-type construction, roughly 7,700 square feet of floor area. So, this would allow for an updating of the zoning as well as for updating of the building here, which has been there for close to 100 years. Juliette, if you want to page through the rest of the photos, we come to the plans and materials, and we note here that there is a mix of ones, twos, and threes at the site. Juliette, if you want to just keep forwarding. So, you have a site plan here, which demonstrates the nine-story portion along Broadway, the ground floor commercially here, again, over 9,000 square feet, and also allowing for accessories in the cellar. And then, as we page through the remainder of the plans and materials, the units above roughly 42 one-bedroom units, 23 two-bedroom units and two three-bedroom units. As with all MIH applications, the affordable units would be in proportion to the existing units in the building, so the affordability would be inclusive of one, two, and three-bedroom units. And again, this was presented to Community Board Two and received a 10 to 1 vote in favor at land use and 27 to 1 at the full board. We're quite excited to bring this application to the Queens Borough President, and with that, the entire applicant team is happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. So, the first question I have is really just about the MIH option. Why was option one not considered here?
Yeah, so, we discussed this with the community board. This would allow for, of course, 80% AMI as an average AMI. Ankeet, who is on the call with us, did some review, and obviously, the median incomes are posted on the board. And it seems that in this area, there would be support for getting a slightly higher AMIs and allowing for a slightly greater number of units at the site. Admittedly, most of the applications that we come in with do end up at option one, and we understand, of course, that the council does have the final say in terms of the choice of districts. Having said here, I'd say two things. The first is that we are including one and two as far as available options to allow for flexibility on all of the sites included in the rezoning, including the five additional sites that are being upsown from R5 to R7A. And, you know, the conversation with the community board was very honest, and the land use chair did cite the fact that there would be three income bands available here and would allow for slightly higher AMIs but for a greater number of units. So, that's the reason we selected that.
Thank you. And I guess, just to, you know, let's jump right to the board's conditions, because I understand that they did overwhelmingly vote in favor, but they did have some good things to point out. So, the use of union labor and prevailing wages, street greenery and planters, and then a greater proportion of two- and three-bedroom units, even if it means some studios. So, could you speak to some of those points?
Sure. So, the community board had several conditions, as was noted. The first was addition of street planters, and this was merely a discussion with regards to required plantings to make sure that the applicant, that Ankeet, was complying with zoning and building code with regards to required plantings. So, to the extent that trees were a problem, they were requesting that planters be placed before the building, as would be required by code, which was not an issue for the applicant. There was a friendly amendment to increase the proportion of two- and three-bedroom units. Admittedly, we have not gone into technical building design yet, but as a matter of principle, you know, we note that many of our applications include studio units, so we were happy to include no studios in this building, but it's something that we would be happy to take a look at and see whether or not we could make larger unit sizes. The additional motion was with regards to union labor. I believe that that was eventually amended to ask for living wage to be paid on the job. So, I think that they basically took off union and asked just for prevailing wage on the application. So, you know, there were conditions, but, you know, essentially, with those conditions, I think the community board was fairly happy.
Okay. And then, lastly, can you just talk about your MWBE hiring goals? You know, that's a big piece of how the Borough President feels.
Sure. So, obviously, since we've been before the Borough President's office many times, we understand the Queens Borough President's office and the desire to increase MWBE hiring. Ankeet himself is, being a product of the local area and having been familiar with the area since he was a child, is very excited to move forward with the project and would be happy to acquiesce and basically to use best efforts to be inclusive of MWBE hiring in terms of the job. So, again, while we have not gone into detailed construction plans or programming in that respect, to the extent that the Queens Borough President was recommending, I believe, 25% for MWBE hiring, we'd be happy to, you know, to have that condition on this and to make an effort to comply with that.
Thank you, Richard. And just for the record, it's usually 30%.
Okay, 30%, sure.
Yeah, thank you. All right, thank you so much. Seeing as there are no public speakers signed up to testify on this particular item, we're going to close this item. So, thank you so much, Richard and team, for your presentation today.
Thank you, Ms. Garvey, and we appreciate the acquiescence in altering the schedule. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, Lisa, if you could call the next two related items?
Calendar items number three and four are related items. ULP number 240297ZMQ and ULP number N240298ZRQ. The applicant, BMBT LLC, affected community board number 11. Applicant, please begin.
Good morning. My name is Frank Sanjoc. I'm with Acreman LLP. We are land use counsel for this project, and I'm joined by members of the applicant team from ownership, Scott Barone from BMBT LLC, and Andrew Esposito, also from the applicant BMBT LLC. I'm going to share my screen. I'll go through a presentation, and then myself and the applicant are happy to answer any questions. Just bear with me one moment while I get my screen going. Great. If I could just get a thumbs up or an acknowledgement that you guys can see my screen? Okay, excellent, thank you. So, this project is noted in Queens Community District 11 on 24th Avenue. Shown here on the zoning map, the site is located on the south side of 24th Avenue. It's currently zoned R12, which was mapped in 2005. It was initially mapped R2 in 1961, then changed to R12 in the Bayside rezoning. I'll note there are R5 and C41 districts mapped to the north and northwest of the site. And the site, while it is within Community District 11, it's adjacent to the boundary of Community District 7, which runs along 24th Avenue. So, again, the site located on the south side of 24th Avenue, where it terminates just east of the intersection with Waters Edge Drive on the north side of 24th Avenue, and a map but unbuilt portion of Little Neck Boulevard on the south side of 24th Avenue. The site is a single tax lot. It's an approximately 55,375-square-foot corner and interior lot. The land uses are shown here on this land use map. Yellow represents low-density residential context within the R12 that's mapped at the site and south of 24th Avenue, again, within Community District 11. And then, brown represents the multifamily residential context in the R5 zoning district mapped to the north of 24th Avenue, again, across that community district boundary in Community District 7. The area to the north and abutting in the site to the east is parkland that's owned by the city. And then, obviously, the Cross Island Parkway is adjacent to the site to the east. The site is shown here, and on the next few slides, it's been used as the Bay Terrace Country Club, a membership-based club that has been on the site for approximately 60 years. And you can see some of that context, lower density to the south of 24th Avenue within the R12, and the more dense R5 context, north and west of the site, across 24th Avenue, and then parkland to the north and east of the site. And again, looking to the northwest, the site is identified, and you can see how it is situated between that lower-density context to the south and the more multifamily contacts to the north. Some more of that context is shown here, calling out the, showing both the site and then some of that context, a range of multifamily buildings peppered throughout that R5 zoning district mapped immediately north of the site. Next few pages are just some photographs, street views of the site. You have on this slide, along 24th Avenue and Waters Edge Drive, facing west on the top-left-hand side of the screen, and then moving clockwise along 24th Avenue, facing west with the development site on the left, and along 24th Avenue, facing east with the development site on the right. Again, moving clockwise from the top-left, you're facing south at the site, then facing the parkland that's immediately north of the site, that's currently being redeveloped into a public park, an accessible public park, not just parkland, and then looking down westward along 24th Avenue. And then, finally, these views are taken from the end of the built portion of Little Neck Boulevard, first looking north and then looking south. Just some statistics related to Community District 11. There's a clear need for new housing and affordable housing within the district. This rezoning, we believe, presents an opportunity to meet that need. Also note that this district has the highest population in Queens of residents age 65 and older. It's the third highest in the city. And it also has an aging housing stock. About 83% was built before 1970, and about 68% was built before 1960. So, we're here with two proposed land use actions. The first is a zoning map amendment that would change that low-density R12 zoning district to a medium-density R6A contextual district, and a zoning text amendment that would designate the rezoning area as a mandatory inclusionary housing area. We have proposed to map both options, MIH options one and two, and I'll show you in a further slide, we've proposed to move forward with MIH option two. So, here in this zoning map, the proposed zoning map, we have the current zoning on the left-hand side of the screen with the rezoning area shaded and the site outlined, and on the right-hand side of the screen, the proposed R6A district. This would cover essentially the site running from the center line of Little Neck Boulevard to the center line of the Cross Island Parkway, noting that this is simply to create clean zoning district boundaries, and then extending southward from the center line of 24th Avenue, 225 feet, again, to cover the southern edge of the site. The proposed development that would be facilitated by the land use actions is an eight-story residential and senior housing building with approximately roughly 217,000 square feet of total floor area, 160,000 of which would be residential floor area. This yields 183 total apartments, 128 of which would be market rate, and under MIH option two, 55 would be permanently income restricted. Just over 56,000 square feet of the proposed building on the first and second floors would be designated as community facility. This would result in 65 senior assisted living units, as well as amenity space for those units. There would be an 86-space parking garage in the cellar, and pursuant to new building code requirements, this would be an entirely electric building. I'll just run through the site plan. I believe I have one more slide after that. Oh, this is essentially a U-shaped building, taking into account required yards. So, there's a 30-foot yard required at the, and I'll note that the bottom of the slide is north and the top of the slide is south, but on the southern edge of the site, along the shared lot line, there is a 30-foot setback that's required. So, the building is accordingly set back 30 feet, and also on the eastern lot line, there's a 30-foot yard requirement. So, the building is situated in consideration of those setbacks. It also rises to a total height of eight stories, but that's above a six-story base. So, you can see where the six-story base, the building is set back above that six-story base. The garage entrance is shown here as well, and the main residential and community facility entrance would be at the northern end of the building. And then, finally, an illustrative MIH breakdown for option two. Again, we're mapping both MIH options one and two, but based on the local AMIs, we believe option two would be appropriate here, as it would also yield about nine or 10 more units than MIH option one to be permanently affordable. The breakdown of those 55 units is shown here by unit type, as well as corresponding rents and maximum incomes. That concludes our presentation, but as I noted, we're happy to answer any questions. I'm going to stop sharing my screen.
Okay. Thank you so much, Frank. Okay. So, can we talk about the long-term care facility with this project?
Yes.
I mean, I guess my question is, what is the status of the long-term care facility? I wasn't sure if this. I know it's been included with the original proposal, but I think there was some discussion of not including it.
Sure. So, this has always been a component of the project. You know, I think the applicant has expressed some flexibility with respect to potentially removing that program. It's, you know, I think even at the community board hearing, it was discussed, you know, making this an entirely residential building. That's something that would be possible with the R6A zoning. You know, at this point, there is not a senior housing provider in place for the project. You know, we've had initial conversations, but we're not locked into to working with a specific provider. The thinking was that, you know, based on the population of CD11 being one of the oldest in the city, that this would meet a need. One thing that we've heard amongst other concerns about the project is that the senior housing component could potentially result in, you know, further concerns with respect to traffic congestion. So, there's a willingness on the applicant's side to rethink that program and, you know, pursue an entirely residential building. What that would result in is, you know, essentially converting that community facility space into additional apartments. We haven't done, you know, design work there in terms of, you know, looking at what that would be. But I will note that our environmental assessment statement, in order to provide a more conservative analysis, looked at an entirely residential building, so there's not a concern about moving outside the scope of our environmental review where we to change the programming.
Okay. Yeah, it would be good to know an updated unit count based on the square footage of the community facility space converting to residential. Everyone's going to testify when they're, yeah. So, I mean, really, the big question, I think, today that will be discussed is, you know, this development site is technically in a floodplain. It's in a city floodplain, and there's going to be new sea level rise, most likely by 2050. So, you know, how are you looking to protect future tenants by ensuring that the building is secure? What kind of floodproofing or what kind of measures would you, you know, put into this building?
Sure. So, I didn't show it on our screen. You know, we discussed this extensively in the environmental assessment statement. You know, the current firm, that's, I'm sorry, flood map that's in place is the 2015 flood map. You know, obviously, projections moving out 20, 50, and 100 years, you know, show that floodline encroaching farther into the site. By virtue of the 2015 floodplain sort of touching the edge of this site, full compliance with Appendix G of the building code is required for this building. So, any below-grade space cannot be habitable, which is not the plan here, and would require either dry or wet floodproofing pursuant to those Appendix G requirements. You know, essentially, based on the flood maps now, this building would have to comply with pretty stringent requirements for flood resiliency that are in place now and that are also intended to protect buildings moving into the future when those flood maps change. So, our environmental assessment statement ensures consistency with the waterfront revitalization program, because we're in a coastal zone and in a floodplain, so that discusses some of the technical aspects. But what it really comes down to is, you know, if this rezoning were approved and the applicant is in the design phase and pulling permits at the Department of Buildings, they will have to show a fully flood-compliant building pursuant to the, again, very stringent requirements of the building code.
Okay, understood. All right. So... All right, so we're going to move on to the public testimony piece. We do have quite a few speakers signed up to speak. One person, I believe, is virtual and the rest are in person. So if everyone could please be patient, I'm going to call each name one by one. And if you could take a walk up to this podium here and turn on the mic and start your testimony. Once I call your name, I'm going to first call on Paul Di Benedetto, the C B eleven chairperson, who will give his testimony. And remember, you have three minutes to testify. Thank you. Whenever you're ready, just hit the button on it on the mic.
Great, thank you. Thanks for having us here today. So I am the Chair of Community Board Eleven. We met on October sixth and reviewed the this both at at the committee level and at the full board level. It was unanimously voted down on both occasions by the community board. Some five hundred people plus people came to the hearing itself. And everybody in that, no, not one single person spoke in favor of of the project. As mentioned, this does lie in in a in a flood zone. I'm glad that was brought up by the by the Borough President's Office. The what the the graphic that they did not show you, that is from their own E A S, the applicant's E A S, shows that over the over between twenty thirty and twenty fifty, the building will be surrounded in a floodplain. Yes, in twenty fifteen, it's on the edge of it, but this is twenty twenty-five. And this out at that let let, I'm sorry, the the height of this building, the building is between two and ten, the property is between two and ten feet above sea level. It's about a few hundred feet from the Little Neck Bay. So the other part of flooding is that Twenty-Fourth Avenue on which it is located on the end of it is, and I'm a, I'm a historian, I I am, I was the president of the Bayside Historical Society for twelve years, and I've been a board member there for twenty years. I can tell you that Twenty-Fourth Avenue was a creek. What is now the Bay Terrace Shopping Center, that the water that accumulated there would drain through this creek. Twenty-fourth Avenue at twenty-four, on top of Twenty-Fourth Avenue, or below Twenty-Fourth Avenue, I should say now. It was landfill was put there and it was covered up and made into a road. That also contributes to the flooding. We see some of this flooding actually occurring in the school, which is being built across the street. Even when it's not raining, we have photos from local residents sent to the community board showing that why is there water in the basement of the new school? That's because there's an underground underground creek there. Another problem with this is that it's across the street from a brand-new school with five hundred and seventy-nine students. What kind of congestion are we going to have on a, there's one way in and one way out if you look at the maps. In nineteen sixty-one, this was, this area was zoned R two. In nineteen, in two thousand and four, it was changed to R two, R one dash two. That is the lowest density zoning in all of Northeast Queens and all of C B eleven. The reason that the line exists on Twenty-S sixth and Twenty-Fourth Avenue is that north of that, they decided in sixty-one that we're going to, we're going to build a lot of high density in Bay Terrace, which is great because a lot of, a lot of my friends live there and folks live there, understood. But this is below Twenty-Fourth Avenue on purpose. This was zoned, this pool club was zoned R one dash two in two thousand and four for a reason, to protect the low density. This building will be twenty, thirty feet away from from the nearby house. The building is eighty-five feet tall with thirty-five foot of of additions on top. That'll be right next to these homes. One of the gentlemen right is sitting here today is one of those residents. So please, you should reject this like the community board did. And just to mention, Senator Bronstein is against the project on on record, as was Councilmember Vicky Palladino at the hearing, at the at the October sixth hearing said she's against it. And I asked her, will you vote against this at the community board? And she said, yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Paul. We're going to call the next person who is on Zoom, Phil Konigsberg. Please unmute and begin your testimony whenever you're ready.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, but we can't see you.
Hey, yeah, I'm looking for where to turn that on here. Or where I can, second, I'm not showing where I can turn on the camera. Yeah, I always have a thing that I can turn on my my video part, and I don't see that here.
Okay, um, well, just in the interest of time, if you're okay with giving your testimony without the camera, we see your name and we can hear you very clearly.
All right, thank you. My name is Phil Konigsberg. I live in Bay Terrace. I live basically a block or so away from this project, this project. And I I really want to just continue on with what I said at the community board meeting. Our community, and I live in Board Seven, I'm a member of Board Seven, so I really couldn't have any more say in this project than I am now and than I did at the Community Board Eleven meeting. But I can tell you, as as Paul had just indicated, that auditorium was packed. There were, we got people from all over our neighborhood to come down and let them know we did not want this project in our neighborhood. I said at the meeting to the applicants that I and the rest of us would be in in their face every step of the way. Now, we're separated by videos now. Unfortunately, you can't see me, but let it be known that I have not plunged an inch on this. In fact, I'm more infuriated the more I think about this. Just imagine there was briefly mentioned, there'd be some traffic. Borough President Richards, the street, you're familiar with the Bay Terrace area. That avenue, that's Twenty-Fourth Avenue, is a very narrow location, very narrow street. It's a dead-end street. They're putting in a school, a huge school right adjacent to where this is going to be. You know what schools are like at arrival and departure? You got double parked, you got triple parked. How is an emergency vehicle going to come into a building that's on a dead end, one way in, one way out access? You can't. It's putting lives in danger. I find this project both obstru- obtrusive and intrusive. We don't want it. It's not for our neighborhood. Most of us here are Board Eleven, but, I'm sorry, Board Seven, but Board Eleven is even closer. You can't allow this. Please don't approve this. Please give your recommendation, like all the other people that you've heard speak, and you will speak. They don't want it. We don't want it. Thank you.
Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Phil, for your testimony. Appreciate it. Okay, so the next speaker is Mr. James Coltesanti.
Press this button.
It should be on. Yes, it's on. You're okay.
I'm here. Hello? No? Yes?
You're on.
Okay. My name is James Collesanti, and I've lived in Bayside sixty years, forty-eight years in the Bayside Gables community. I was an active board member for forty-six years, and I was also a merchant in Bay Terrace Shopping Center for forty years. I know firsthand how much Bayside and Bay Terrace has grown. Twenty-fourth and Twenty-sixth Avenues are the dividing lines between Community Board Seven and Eleven, joining us as neighbors. Several decades ago, Cord Meyer developed the area with apartment buildings, garden apartments, and the Bay Terrace Shopping Center, establishing a vibrant community. During the years of land development, they respected the balance of suburban living and apartment living and left the land to the south of Twenty-Fourth and Twenty-sixth Avenues for suburban development. In nineteen twenty-seven, Cord Meyer developed the Gables community to showcase suburban homes and set the stage for the surrounding area. And so began the growth of Bayside South of Twenty-Fourth and Twenty-sixth Avenues. The Bayside Gables, an historic community, soon to be celebrated its one-hundredth anniversary. Hopefully, we can preserve its heritage. There are many reasons to reject the zoning application today, all quite troubling. The complexities with the environment, construction, infrastructure issues are numerous. Between the new school and the proposed apartment building, there will be a shortfall of almost one hundred parking spaces. Where will all the cars park? The flooding in Twenty-Fourth Avenue and the surrounding area has plagued the community for decades. In the space of four years, there has been two severe storms that ravaged our community. The latest this past summer caused parking lot flooding, cars destroyed, basements flooded, toilets overflowed. The existing sewer system cannot handle the amount of water and sewage that flows at the Twenty-Fourth Avenue. This can and will happen again. The current pile driving at the school only attests to the fact that the land is weak and unstable. The fact that the first floor of the school will be several feet above ground level supports the fear of flooding. The same conditions will prevail at the apartment site, only more so because they are closer to wetlands and the flood zone. The combination of the two buildings will only exacerbate the problem. The height and sky plane exposure of this building will tower eighty-five feet over the adjoining homes, only thirty feet away from the existing property lines. This is beyond comprehension. The developer wants to put an eighty-five-car parking lot beneath the building, wall pile driving. Homes will be compromised and walls will crack. Development states the land is suitable for development, and the proposal is not inconsistent with some of the surrounding area. That is not true. The current apartment buildings are three hundred feet or more away from the existing homes and are in Committee Board Seven, a far different composition of housing. Any environmental study done was skewed in favor of the developer. The builder says something can be developed there, something amenable to the community. Yes, something can be built by maintaining our suburban environment with single-family homes. The builder states that the land is suitable in composition environmentally. I'm sure FEMA and the State of New York have different opinions. This is a dead-end street with poor ingress and egress. The traffic light at Twenty-Fourth Avenue and Bell Boulevard servicing the shopping center has six different settings to direct traffic flow. Viola traffic transiting Twenty-Fourth Avenue would be insurmountable, and drivers will face daily frustration and chaos. This project is ill-conceived, and our elected officials have no compulsion to reject it outright. We ask that you join Committee Board Eleven and Councilmember Vicky Palladino and vote no against zoning, against this zoning, this application, to save our community and way of life. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Okay, we're going to move on to the next person who is on Zoom, Sylvia Johnson. Whenever you're ready, if you could unmute and turn your camera on, and then state your name for the record to begin your testimony.
How do I turn, how do I turn my camera on? I have, I'm having the same problem as Phil.
Okay, I can't speak to what you're seeing, but there should be a camera icon.
Yeah, there isn't. There only, there's only an audio.
Okay, well, I apologize for the technical difficulty.
That's okay. I'll start.
Yes.
I'll, I'll begin. I thank you, the Borough President's Office, for giving me the platform to speak today. My name is Sylvia Johnson. My complex is adjacent to the school construction currently taking place across the street from this proposed construction. I speak on behalf of the Bay Terrace Community Alliance as Secretary, as Vice President of Bay Terrace Owners, and as an individual resident of the Bay Terrace community in opposition to the construction of an eight-story senior and residential building on the current Bay Terrace Country Club property, U L R two four oh, two nine seven, Z M Q, and N two four zero, two, two nine eight, Z R Q, and wish to make the following points. This dead-end intersection cannot safely handle the traffic which would be created by buses, ambulances, and emergency vehicles and resident traffic. The property is a flood zone, and strong rainstorms create heavy flooding, which in addition to damaging cars, also will inhibit those emergency vehicles from reaching the assisted living facility. Last month, Waters Edge Drive, Bay Vista Garage, and Lobby, and and some of our parking lots in my community were severely flooded and cars permanently damaged. The property is built over wetlands and was originally a swamp. This corner is adjacent to the aforementioned school construction on New York City Park and above a sewer pumping station, and the dynamics of this proposed construction to this corner will be overwhelming to the neighborhood. There is already limited existing parking without the addition of a five hundred and seventy-two-student school plus additional teachers and administrative staff and park attendees. Where will they park? Public transportation is five blocks away, which need to be navigated in all forms of weather. School bus, District Seventy-five transportation vehicles, parents' drop-off pickup will create severe congestion and difficulty for neighbors to maneuver to and from their homes. The existing noise level and construction reverberation is adversely affecting the neighborhood, and this proposed construction will be even worse. And ultimately, and as important as the safety of the children, assisted living patients, and residents immediately adjacent to the space needed for emergency assistance. The property in question is zoned R one dash two for one-family detached homes, which maintains the integrity of the immediate neighborhood. Three large projects thrust upon us on a narrow, a small, narrow residential street is just too much. This overdevelopment will be burdensome to the community and a poor location for an eight-story facility, which will not provide affordable housing and just create enormous congestion. To raise the zoning from R one to R six is an insult to the community, an absurd increase to propose. This zoning increase would create a bad precedent for other one-family, low-density communities in Bayside and beyond, and put them all at risk anywhere with low-density housing. Thank you so much for listening, and thank you so much for the hundreds of people who have signed my petitions and those who have come to the C B eleven meeting, over five hundred, to show their opposition to this upzoning. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Okay, next, I'm going to call Leo Marinello up to deliver testimony in person.
Good morning and thank you. My name is Leo Marinello. I've lived in Bayside for six decades, but it was originally my grandmother's dream to live in Bayside. So after the Second World War, she began what turned out to be a decade-long on-and-off search to find a home in Bayside. And finally, in one day in the nineteen fifty's, she found it. But it was just a plot of land, so they had to build the house. Coming from the tenements of Little Italy, my grandfather could never have imagined living out here in the country. But my grandmother had a vision for how it could be. My grandmother taught us to plan for the future, to be open, resilient, and accepting of change, but to be mindful of two things. That the actions we take today can have unintended consequences, far-reaching consequences, and that life is not about instant gratification. There is a Greek proverb that says, "A society grows great when old men plant trees who shade they know they will never sit in." It is like the Jewish tradition of Tikun Olam, repairing the world. Bayside, and by extension, all of Queens, is our corner of the world. And although we certainly do not have to agree on everything, I hope that we can all agree that each of us, as neighbors, have an obligation to repair, nurture, protect, and preserve our communities for the future generations coming from places near and far whom we continue to welcome and who will be here long after all of us are gone. My grandmother's house has stood the test of time. More than seventy years later, it still looks remarkably the same from the outside. I can't tell you how it looks on the inside because we no longer own that house, but it is directly adjacent to the property that is the subject of today's meeting. This project, the proposed construction, will quite literally cast a long, dark shadow on my grandmother's home. But more importantly, it will cast a long, dark shadow on the entire Bayside community. If this unthinkable upzoning is approved, it will set a terrible precedent, sanctioning rampant and unrestrained overdevelopment that will be replicated throughout Bayside and beyond. I was reminded a couple of weeks ago in church that sometimes inaction is a sin. With that in mind, with mind of my grandmother's long-ago search, I made up a flyer, and I made a few thousand copies of that flyer, and I started going door-to-door in a mile radius of this project. And I stood outside at the shopping center, handing them out to people in Bay Terrace. And I spoke to hundreds and hundreds of people, face-to-face, one-on-one. And I can honestly say that I have not met one person who is in favor of this project and that there is unity in the community against this project. And the several hundred people I have spoken to, not one. The priest also told us, "Sometimes what's popular isn't always right, and what's right isn't popular." But I can tell you that the opposition to this project is both right and popular throughout the community. And that is why I'm humbly asking you, Mr. Borough President, to stand with the community and against this project. I thank you. Good morning.
Thank you very much for your testimony. The next person I'm going to call is on the Zoom, Margaret Penatiere. The next person I'm going to call is on the Zoom, Margaret Penatiere. Whenever you're ready, you can unmute and begin your testimony.
You have.
Is Margaret on the Zoom? Okay. So.
Hi, this is Phil. Margaret is in contact. She may be having problems signing, you know, getting through.
Okay, so you know what? We'll call her name at the end. And she, you know, if, hopefully she'll give her testimony. If anything, she can always submit written testimony as well. It is the same thing. So I'm going to go ahead and move on to John Levaderos, who is in person to deliver public testimony.
Hello, my name is John Levaderos. I represent Bayside Gable Civic Association and Homestead Association. Approximately 106 homes in that area. Approximately a month ago, we had a town hall meeting that Vicky Palladino held regarding the school construction. Board of Education was there, School Construction Authority. Basically, they were telling us that the school was being built in order to alleviate overcrowding in District 25 of the Board of Ed with the provision of this new building. Approximately 50% of the seats of that school would be lost. In addition, there's a park going across the street from that school, which is going to assist the, the school in, I guess, I guess playground time or even during school. The provision of this building being built is going to severely hinder that. It's also going to hinder their education. It's going to hinder the educators being able to teach during the three years of construction. The height of the school will also, the height of, sorry, the height of the building will also shadow the park being built by the Parks Department. It's going to be way, way over 80 feet as per the zoning resolution height because it has permitted obstructions on the roof, elevator bulkheads, stair bulkheads, mechanical equipment. Also, it's being set back 30 feet in order to provide light and air as per the zoning resolution for the apartments at the rear of the building, which those apartments will be overlooking the R1, R12 district, single family homes. They also have to provide under R6A. They have to provide public space for the tenants, so those tenants will be on that roof under quality housing. They're going to have more give backs as well for floor area. They're going to have additional light and air in corridors where the building will be much larger than what they're saying because they get those flat floor area back, that loss factor during development. Pretty much, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your testimony. So the last person that we would call is Marty Rosenbaum. Rosenbaum, I'm so sorry. Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you so much. Good morning. My name is Marty Rosenbaum. I'm an attorney. I represent Karen Landy, my partner, who is here today. Karen lives in a condominium apartment located at 2355 Bell Boulevard in Bayside, Queens. I'm speaking today in strong opposition to the proposed zoning change at 24th Avenue and Waters Edge Drive. We urge the Borough President to strongly oppose this zoning change. Well, as you know, Community Board 11 met on October 6, 2025 to consider the proposal. The meeting was moved to Bayside High School, the auditorium, because of the large crowd. Nearly 500 local residents, between 3 and 500 is the estimate, packed Bayside High School. I attended the meeting. All but one member of the public spoke strongly against approval of the project. And as you know, Community Board 11 voted unanimously to oppose this project. Here's the front page. I brought it today and provided it to your staff. Here's the front page of the Queens Chronicle of October 9, just last week. The headline, "Danger Zone: Community Board 11 Rejects Apartment Building Complex." Also, we've provided to you today the article on page four of the Chronicle entitled "Cold Reception for Apartment Proposal." And here is the Queens Chronicle editorial also given to you today, entitled "Eight Stories Is Beyond Enough in Bayside." I've submitted these documents for the record. The property that is the subject of this proposal is located on a peninsula, a small spit of land in Bayside. It's a fragile area environmentally. There's essentially one road into the community and one road out. Very little street parking is available. The widespread opposition to this program, to this change, is legitimate. This very small spit of Bayside land is a transportation desert. There is no subway service. There is simply not sufficient space, parking, or transportation for a building of the size and population density proposed for this change. There's an additional reason why this zoning change must be rejected. Already in this crowded space, construction is underway for an elementary school, as you've heard, to serve more than 500 students. Nearly 100 commuting staff will be coming as well when the school opens in 2026 or 2027. The proponents of this zoning change and the environmental impact reviews to date did not consider, did not consider the impact that this large new school will have on this small, isolated community. One road out and one road in is already insufficient to serve the planned influx of students, parents, and staff. The single road out of this confined community will be choked. Traffic will regularly come to a standstill. Ambulances and emergency vehicles will be slowed, endangering local residents and schoolchildren. Recently, it was confirmed that a significant number of students at the new school will be District 75 students. Many of these students need special transportation services, such as body lifts and specialized buses and vehicles.
Can you please wrap up your testimony?
Yes. Mr. Borough President, there's already an ongoing crisis of construction with dangerously loud pile driving, traffic, and pollution. The 24th Street corridor flooded terribly last month's rainstorm, destroying parked cars of many residents. Photos of the new construction show a large pool, a huge pool of water as the shallow groundbreaking has revealed the underground waterway. In conclusion, we are asking you to strongly oppose the zoning change. No more than a few individual houses or a small low rise commercial building consistent with the residential character of this community should be allowed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Going to call Margaret Penatiere one last time. Hopefully she is on Zoom. Okay, I will make sure to follow up with her and let her know that written testimony is accepted by 5:00 PM today. Again, the same as if she were to testify in person. So with that, I don't see any other speakers on this item, so I'm going to go ahead and close it. So thank you, everyone, for your testimony, and thank you for the applicant team for your patience. This item is closed, so thank you. The hearing is still going on, but this item is closed. So Lisa, I'm going to ask you to call the next two related calendar items.
Certainly. Calendar items number five and six are, again, related items. ULR number 240145ZMQ and ULR number N240146ZRQ. The applicant is Linden Canyon LLC, affected community board number 10. Applicant, you may begin.
Good morning. My name is Lisa Orantia from Acreman LLP. I'll be sharing my screen. So this application concerns 7808 Linden Boulevard in Queens Community District 10. The applicant is Linden Canyon LLC. And I'm joined today by my colleague Steve Sinicori, project architect Frank Catella, and owner representative Florencia Mutterelli. The primary action here is a proposed map change to allow for a moderate increase in residential density. This is an aerial view and tax map showing the site located on Linden Boulevard between Sapphire Street and 79th Street at the Brooklyn, Queens boundary line. The Linden Wood Diner is to the west, and Linden Center Shopping Mall is to the north. Gemini Fields is an over 10 acre public park to the northeast. And this area is a transitional area located with existing development west of 79th Street being higher density mix of commercial and residential, and east of 79th Street being lower density two story, two and three story family buildings. The transportation is about a mile north of the site, and bus stops along Linden Boulevard provide access to express service to Midtown and JFK Airport. The site comprises about 48,000 square feet of lot area with 200 feet of frontage along Linden Boulevard, Sapphire Street, and 79th Street. The existing development there is a one story, 22,000 square foot commercial building with open parking, and this building dates back to 1966. The tenants rent month to month, and Walgreens is not interested in a long term lease. On the left is the zoning map showing the site as it's currently mapped in an R4 district with a C12 overlay. This is a low density residential district allowing two and three story buildings. We're proposing a map change shown on the right to a medium density R7D with C24 overlay along Linden Boulevard to promote residential development along the transit corridor and a medium density R6A at the mid block. In addition, the application proposes to map an MIH area for options 1 and 2, and also to cancel a 1976 restrictive declaration recorded when the existing commercial overlay was matched. And C2C approval is required to cancel this RD to allow as of right development. The new districts would allow up to 12 stories along Linden Boulevard and nine stories at mid block. The increase in density is consistent with land use policy because the site is located on a major roadway. It's at a spacious street intersection with access to public transportation and outdoor recreation space, and it's compatible with the R6 and R7 and R8 districts to the west. On the left is the initial schematic massing that was prepared at the time the application was filed. And on the right is a massing based on community input during the public review process. So the design was improved in three ways. Building height and street wall, height along 79th Street were lowered so that the street wall was changed from seven stories to four stories. And building height was changed from 11 to 6. This is along 79th Street to, to respect the lower density buildings on 79th Street. All 267 dwelling units are now designated for 97 units of senior housing, and that's shown in yellow, and 170 units of workforce housing, and that's shown in blue. Instead of two commercial establishments, there's now space for two community facility uses. So the revised design still fully utilizes floor area available from the rezoning, but it shifts height to the northwest. It creates senior and workforce housing and provides for community facility spaces. So we have six and 12 story buildings with 224,000 square feet of total floor area, over 7,000 square feet of community facility floor area, 7,000 square feet of recreation space, and 86 residential parking spaces. Parking access will be at the rear of the building along the side streets. Residential lobbies will be on Linden Boulevard and 79th Street, and community facility space will be accessed from Linden Boulevard. So the development would comply with MIH option 2. 170 workforce housing units would be reserved to households earning an average of 70% AMI, and 97 senior units would be limited based on maximum percentage of income. City planning issued a negative declaration with E-designations for hazmat, air quality, and noise. Community Board 10 recommended approval of the application with a commitment from the applicant to incorporate senior housing, to shift bulk away from 79th Street, and to agree to coordinate on the specific use for the community facility space. And that concludes the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And also, thank you for showing those updated designs about those two buildings I wanted to ask about based on the community board's feedback. So based on their conditions with their vote, is the applicant team able to meet all of the conditions as presented? So the two new buildings with the community facility space being an FDNY ambulance bay or office, and then assigned deed restriction?
Yeah, the applicant has already committed to incorporating senior housing and to shift bulk away from 79th Street. So you do see that already reflected in the drawings. And I'll let Steve address the community facility use.
Hi, this is Steve Sinicori. I apologize, I'm in transit, so my camera's not working correctly. Regarding the community facility space, we agreed that we would work with both the council member and the FDNY to, going forward, to potentially put an FDNY ambulance facility at the location. But it's going to require, you know, work after this project is approved. So basically, we said that we, you know, we'd be happy to reserve the space. But later on, Ms. Garvey, it would require some type of follow up action for a disposition. So the, the long and the short of it is, is that we're open to facilitating that space, and we are, we'd be very happy to have the FDNY, you know, in our facility. But that will take some time to, you know, you know, to go through the process. But it's not like this building is going to be built, you know, in the next two years because after this is approved, we still have to work on our city financing. So we're certainly open to it, and we'll do everything possible to make that happen.
Understood. Okay. And then the last thing was assigned deed restriction with regard to the height?
Correct. So with respect to, with respect to that, we, we agreed that, subject to our lender's approval, we would be able to put a restriction in our deed that the height along 79th Street, that the street wall would be no higher than six stories. Meaning that we don't have a lender selected for the, you know, for the affordable housing project yet. So if we were to put a deed restriction now, and the, and the lender wasn't, you know, on board with it, we'd have to, we'd have to start, you know, we could create a problem for our financing. So we have to speak to a few different lenders regarding this. But one is not selected, and unfortunately, it's putting the cart before the horse because they don't want to, none of the lenders want to look at the project until you're fully approved through ULR. But to the extent that the lender has no objection, we have no problem doing it.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you for breaking that down. Okay, so I'm going to move on to similar question to the other project. The site is technically within a floodplain. Similar issue looking for, looking ahead to 2050. So can you speak to some of the floodproofing elements and anything you might be going above and beyond with, with respect to Appendix G?
Sure. So our consultant on the project is H2M Architects and Engineers, and they'll be advising on stormwater management. We'll have floodgates installed at all community facility entrances. We'll have floodgates installed at all community facility entrances and at the residential parking entrances. The residential dwelling units will be above ground level, and we won't have mechanical utility or other critical building systems below the flood risk elevation. There's a plan to have tanks to capture stormwater and slowly expel it to the same degree as would be for an R4 development under the current zoning, and that will reduce overflow onto 79th Street. We also intend to work with DOT, DEP on grade elevation for 79th Street, possibility of bioswales with DEP approval, and we're open to additional efforts to help control stormwater and generally work with the community and DEP for sewer improvement. The last thing I'll mention is that we're aiming to be consistent in keeping track of HPD's Jewel Streets Neighborhood Study, which is a long-term plan to reduce flooding and improve infrastructure and create opportunities for affordable housing and economic development. And in that study, this site was identified for, as being appropriate for high-density mixed-use development.
Okay, great. I'm glad to hear that you are keeping the Jewel Streets plan in mind because I know that this is sort of the borderline between Queens and Brooklyn, and that can be, you know, its own discussion, but, you know, it's all New York City, so it's good that you are aligned with what they're doing over there. So my last question is, with respect to MWBE hiring goals, do you, do you think you are confident in matching the 30% minimum?
Yes, that is the aim for this project.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so I'm gonna, those are all my questions. I'm gonna move on. I believe we have the Board 10 Chairperson, Betty Bratton, on the call who would like to testify, so I'm gonna go ahead and throw it to her whenever she is ready.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good morning. Thank you very much for the opportunity, Mr. Borough President, to be able to comment to you today. My name is Betty Bratton. I'm the Chairperson of Community Board 10. I'm here to express Community Board 10's position regarding the two items related to property located within the Alendenwood Community Neighborhood, known as 780206 Linden Boulevard Rezoning Project. Community Board 10 conducted its public hearing on the project on October 2nd, where the applicant representatives presented information about the application as certified in July by City Planning. They also presented information about revisions to it. Those revisions that you heard about a few minutes ago resulted from discussions with the council member who represents the area, the Neighborhood Civic Association, and Community Board 10's Landes Committee Chairperson and me. It's a difficult area, as you've noted, so those discussions were really very necessary. They were all aimed at finding common ground between the applicant and the community where changes might be made by the applicant that would result in a project that would be more acceptable to the nearby residents in the areas low-density residential zone. It's an R4 zone on the Queens side, and it should be noted that there aren't any buildings in the entire Alendenwood community that are over six stories. There were no speakers at all who commented during our public hearing. Community Board 10 received one written comment from a community resident on the day prior to our hearing that was supportive of the revised proposal as presented by the applicant at the local civic association meeting on September 30th. Prior to voting on October 2nd on the 7806 Linden Boulevard project, ULP items, all questions posed by board members were answered by the applicant representatives that were present. The motion by Community Board 10 was to approve with modifications and conditions. It passed with only one dissenting vote. It is the view in the Alendenwood community that the revisions accomplished to a great degree, the goal, the goal to provide needed housing for both workers and seniors with less, with less negative impact for the neighboring board area, R4 area. Community Board 10 essentially concurred, as reflected by our vote. Our full statement was submitted to your office earlier today. It provides you with the modifications, which you mentioned earlier. We approved, those were the modifications we approved, and more detail on the background for them. Community Board 10 respectfully asks that the Borough President consider and include those conditions in the recommendations made on behalf of the Borough to City Planning. Again, thank you for the opportunity to express our views to you, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Betty. Okay, so I don't believe we have anyone else signed up to speak on this item. So with that, I'm gonna go ahead and close this item. Thank you, applicant team, for your presentation. Have a great rest of the day. And I think, Lisa, we are now ready to call the next and final calendar item.
Certainly. Calendar item number seven, ULP number 250252ZMQ. The applicant is Phil Mathi, affected community board number 13. Applicant, please begin.
Good morning. Todd Dale from Roth Krug, Roth Krug Inspector. On behalf of this application, I will go ahead and share my screen. Let me know, did that presentation show?
I don't see anything.
Take a look again. There we go.
Yes.
Okay. Sorry. Apologies in advance, we're recovering from a little bronchitis, so try and keep coughing to a minimum.
Sorry to hear that.
No, thank you. So this, this application seeks a zoning map amendment from an R4-1 district to R4 that would affect portions of Block 8662 in Queens, and more specifically, a proposed development site that consists of Lot 30 and 31. Just as a point of clarity, the photographs that I'll be showing actually go from south, excuse me, from north to south, just to allow a visual of the site, just to get some clarity with the maps. This surrounding area of the project area is located on 90th Avenue, south side of 90th Avenue, near Commonwealth Boulevard, just north of Jericho Turnpike. The area is predominantly characterized by residential uses to the north. It consists mostly of one and two-family homes that range from two to three stories. Along Jericho Boulevard to the south is primarily a commercial development. There is a C23 commercial overlay on that section of the block, primarily retail with a automotive repair and warehouse shop. The particular site, the development site, is two lots within the block right here, we'll show, Lot 30 and 31. Lot 30 is a trapezoid-shaped lot that's currently developed with an existing two-family home that's approximately 1,700 square feet. Lot 31, which is immediately adjacent to the east, is in a regular rectangular lot that is currently vacant. The two lots, two tax lots, consist of a single zoning lot. To provide some background, the proposed action seeks to amend the map to shift an existing district line between an R4 district located here that bisects the block north, so it would be into the center of 90th Avenue right here. To give some background, this development site was originally zoned at R4-1 since 1961, establishment of the zoning resolution. And the key change affecting the site was in 1991 when the Belrose rezoning occurred, and the R4-1 district was mapped. And when it was mapped, it was mapped so that went through the center of this block, creating split lot, split zoning lot designations for majority of these lots on the eastern side of this particular block. There were a few other actions that didn't directly affect the site, including changing of the commercial overlay to the south. This proposed development that sought is, and I'll go down here, is, the intent is to facilitate development of Lot 31 with a two-story, two-family home that would be approximately 1,475 square feet. It would be a semi-detached home with the existing home on Lot 30, resulting in a total of 3,200 square feet and an FAR of 0.77 that would be compliant with all district requirements. The action that sought and required is the zoning amendment from R4-1 to R4, and what it would do is it would relocate the boundary of the R4-1 district, as I said, to the center of 90th Avenue, eliminating the split zoning lock condition that affects this particular site. The split zoning lock condition that will currently prevents development, excuse me, prevents development as regulations limit construction to a single two-family dwelling on the zoning lot. So the shift of the district line would allow for the semi-detached development that's proposed. Currently, as noted, like this project area does affect these other lots. These lots that are to the west are currently developed right now, and no future development there is expected. And over here to the east, you can see that they are as minimally affected. So this particular development site is in the, the center of the affected area with the split zoning lock condition. However, the shift would basically remove the restrictive split lock conditions that do affect all these sites in case any other future development happened. I'm happy to answer any questions or go to any particular slide. I'll stop the sharing now, but I can bring the screen back up if there's any questions about a particular slide.
Thank you. So with regard to the development site, will the front and side yard requirements still be met based on the zoning resolution?
Yes, yes. There would be, there would be no need for a variance or anything like that. The R4 designation would allow for compliant development of the new proposed development.
Okay, understood. So really, this is just about cleaning up the map. Okay, I guess the only other question I have is, I'm not, at the, at this particular time, I'm not aware that CB13 has weighed in on this.
Excellent, thank you. Sorry, I forgot to mention it. There is a meeting scheduled Monday evening, October 20th, and we will appear at that meeting, and we'll be happy to answer any questions of the community board and provide an update to the Borough President's office after that meeting.
Okay, understood. Okay, so that's good to know. Otherwise, no other questions on this? And I don't believe we have any speakers signed up to testify, so I'm gonna go ahead and close this item. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And with that, there are no other public speakers, so I'm gonna go ahead and close the entire hearing. Our next scheduled hybrid land use public hearing is Thursday, October 30th, starting at 9:30 AM. Thank you so much for joining us, and be well.